Good evening, Wareham, and welcome to the Select Board Meeting of April 1st, 2025. I'd like a motion to appoint a Clerk pro tem, please.
I move to appoint Sherri Quirk as the Clerk pro tem.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to appoint Ms. Quirk as Clerk pro tem. You may. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Yes, thank you very much. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Corbett?
I am here.
Okay. Ms. Whiteside?
I'm here.
And I believe remotely we have Town Council, Rich, sorry, I'm blanking.
Bowen.
Rich Bowen, Derek Sullivan, and I believe that's it.
Okay, and absent tonight, apparently, both Mr. Bessie and Mr. Chadwick.
Thank you.
I declare a quorum to be present. Bobby, do you know the Pledge of Allegiance?
I believe I do.
How about leading us?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Announcements, well, residents' comments. Is there anyone in the audience who chooses to address us?
Not at this time.
Not at this time, thank you. Announcements.
I have one. The, at the library, the Peep Diorama Competition is underway. That is so cute and funny and fun, so I wasn't able to print out the Wareham Week story that had all the details about it because my printer wasn't working all day. But just go to Wareham Week, read the story, and please look at the displays. They are adorable and hilarious, and the town departments get involved in them, and some of those are really, really intricate and complicated. I think last year, the W, the sewer facility had an incredible feat of engineering out of peeps. So please go look at them and please enter that competition. And it's, oh!
Did we get to eat them when it's done?
Yes.
Oh.
You have to eat all of them when they're done.
No, thank you. Ms. Quirk?
Yes. I, just to have a couple of things to mention. One is I wanted to mention that our community has lost a very valuable citizen.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot all about that. I'm sorry.
I got it. Denise Schultz passed away on March 22nd at the age of 69. Many of you know her and know of her, you know, long and tireless history of volunteering for the town. She was a devoted wife and mother, grandmother, a friend and volunteer. And I just wanted to announce that there will be a service for her on April 12th from 12:00 to 3:00 at Solerno's, where I think the request has been no speeches, but just come and share stories.
Thank you, and I think we, it would be appropriate to have a moment of silence for her. I apologize, I forgot. So, that's okay. Thank you.
Just one more thing.
Yep.
On an entirely different note, some of us are going to Wareham, England in May, and this is part of the twinning program between Wareham, Massachusetts and Wareham, England. And you may recall that last October, we had some folks from the government of Wareham in town. They brought us some nice gifts. They had a really good time. They loved being here and really expressed their appreciation for the welcome that they received and, and the places they went, the things that they saw. Now that we're going over there, we're starting to think about how we can reciprocate. And Madam Chair, one of the things that we, the twinning committee wanted to recommend is, is that we go over with a proclamation that commemorates the relationship and, you know, our enjoyment of their time here. And it was also recommended that when they were here, they were really impressed with our town hall, because apparently it drastically dwarfs their own town hall. And so one of the things that we thought might be good to take along would be some kind of picture or depiction of the town hall, so that they would have that to remind them of Wareham, Massachusetts. They were also really impressed with the cranberry industry here, and I think things related to the cranberry industry would be, you know, things to think about as well. And also Derek wanted to request that you think about this, because I think in your office, there is one copy of everything related to Wareham that has ever been created. So if you can delve into your supplies and maybe equip us with some gifts, we would be really appreciative of that. Thank you, that's all I have.
And I must say that they had some really good gifts from us heading out there. We gifted them considerably.
Yeah.
It was awesome.
Yeah. Okay, what, what is the date of the visit, please?
I'm, I'm gonna have to get back to you.
It's May, it's early May, right?
Yes, it's like May 10th through, something like that, yeah.
Okay, so that gives us, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. And actually, I have to apologize, M.O.S. Denise Schultz, my, I'm gonna sound, was right on my, right on the top of my agenda. That's so bad, I'm sorry.
I knew that you would, I knew you would remember. I have confidence in you.
Yeah, okay, I didn't. Okay, we have a couple of invitations, and I'm gonna make one of them an announcement. We have a young man who is a student at Bishop Stang, and he's going to be an Eagle Scout. He does not belong to the Wareham chapter, but he has achieved the rank of Eagle Scout, and he's invited us, and his family have invited us, to the celebration, which is in Fall River. His Eagle Scout project was actually cleaning the kitchen on the Kennedy.
Oh, that's a job.
Yeah, and he's been at it for three years. He's really an interesting kid. He also, as a job, works at King Richard's Fair. So that's kind of cool. Those of you who may have gone by Lopes Field have noticed, hopefully, that Lopes Field, old wooden structure was totally taken down, and there's now lots of pieces of equipment, many of them have already been put together. And CORE, which is the 501(c)(3), which was formed to support all recreational facilities in town, is actually selling pickets. The old pickets that were there before are still there, we stored them, but there are only 100 pickets available, and they cost $100 apiece. And the, if you go online under CORE, it looks like this, it's in color, but I will give you one of these, and I already bought two for my grandchildren, so, of course. And we do have some 48-hour business tonight, and as soon as that person appears, because she's at another meeting, we will go to do that. And we will now move on to...
Wait, were you gonna do this?
Oh, yes. See? The new website, which I had a great deal of difficulty getting on to, is now www.wareham.gov. If you have been signed up before, you can sign up again to, but you need to go into that website, and there are instructions online. They didn't work for me. They didn't. But it, the new website is really nice looking. A lot of things have been moved, so it's a little confusing to find what you're used to looking for in a different place. But it's really, it's still under construction in terms of, you know, filling things in, but it's really a great new site.
And can I add to that? This is something that came up at our Community Events Committee meeting last time around, that our Chair, Lori Benson, said that Matt Underhill, the person responsible for this brand-new website, wants each committee and board, someone from each committee and board to go to their normal page on the website and make sure everything that they expect to see there is there. I went today to the CORE website, CEC website, and it looked like everything came over perfectly well, but it's good to know something isn't, and then our team can, IT team can take care of it.
And actually, every Chair and Clerk on every board and committee got an email from us a month ago to please do that.
Okay, so they already knew.
So they were supposed to have done it before, but, and that's great, that was a reminder. Thank you.
[inaudible]
Oh, excellent. Under 48-hour business, I got a request on Friday, and so it's appropriate if we could take this up now. Liz Wiley is from the Marion Institute, and you have a couple of pieces of paper and, as well as a draft letter that she is asking that we send on behalf of the request that she's gonna make. So, hi Liz, if you would identify yourself for the record, and we do have everything that you sent to us in front of us, but I'd like you to do some talking. I think food insecurity is gonna be a bigger problem than it already is.
This is true. Thank you all for having me tonight. Thank you, Judy, for getting me on. So the Marion Institute, one of our programs that we run is the South Coast Food Policy Council. And in 2021, we produced a food system assessment for southeastern Mass that included Bristol, Plymouth, and Norfolk County. It is that report that we have been operating off of, and that has set sort of our agenda and our priorities and our initiatives that we've been enacting for the last four, four-plus years. Going forward for our next food system assessment, which is due in 2026, we've expanded our region to include Barnstable, Dukes, and Nantucket County. We've also expanded the food system assessment to include a community-led, community-driven approach to more of the social infrastructure data. So those of you less familiar with a food system assessment, as you can imagine, it is full of a lot of secondary data, that is data that we get from sources like USDA or Feeding America and things like that. A lot of the social infrastructure data, data is things that you know about your community, you know about your county, you know about your region, that doesn't get implemented often into a food system assessment, but yet is critical information for us to have. So for the past, I'd say, seven or eight months, the South Coast Food Policy Council, we've been working with our, our Community Advisory Board of Stakeholders that make up our CAB for our Food Policy Council, to do a CARAT audit process that will be embedded into the next food system assessment. This CARAT stands for C-A-R-A-T. It's a Community Agricultural Resiliency auditing tool, and it gets at that social infrastructure data that I was alluding to. We have funding to do that CARAT project and CARAT work with a Community Advisory Board of Stakeholders in Plymouth County. And this grant that we're applying for with the Cape Cod Community, the Cape Cod Cooperative Extension in Barnstable, will allow us to do the CARAT in Norfolk, Barnstable, Dukes, and Nantucket County, and all of that CARAT data will then be synthesized into the next food system assessment, which will be published in September of 2026. So our request to you, part of this process is that the grant is through the Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, and it's their MVP grant, Action Grant, the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Grant. A municipal lead has to, municipal partner has to be the lead on that, and that's why Cape Cod Cooperative Extension has stepped up to be the lead, and we are the co-authors. It's our project, but we needed that partner because we can't get the grant through as a nonprofit. So as many municipalities as we can get to sign on to this is going to greatly, you know, increase our chances of getting this funding. So I am hoping that you will all sign on, or sign a letter for us to submit. We need it this week. The grants due Friday. Happy to answer any questions. That was a really quick overview.
Thank you.
I think this is a wonderful thing for us to support, and I'm glad that, that we're able to.
I, and I echo your sentiments. I think it's really important to understand that food insecurity is real, and I suspect that it might become even more real. The draft letter was in the information that we got this evening, so if you don't have any questions of Ms. Wiley, then I would accept a motion to authorize the Chair to sign the letter of support, which is addressed to the Cape Cod Cooperative Extension, Barnstable County Food Access Coordinator.
And I so move, I move to authorize the Chair to sign a letter of support for the Barnstable County Cape Cod Cooperative Extension's application through the Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to authorize the Chair to sign the letter. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Ms. Corb, aye. And myself, aye. It is so. Ms. Wiley, thank you very much, the letter, do you want it emailed to you, or do you want to pick it up?
Email would be great.
Okay, we'll get it out to you tomorrow.
That's perfect. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, and thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Excellent. Is Mr. William Fuller around anyplace?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller, would you raise your hand, and we're gonna go to 8E, the one-day liquor He said he might have trouble with video, but not audio, so let's try that.
He's in.
Okay. Mr. Fuller, would you identify yourself for the record, please, and explain briefly about your business and what it is that this one-day permit is, would entitle you to do?
He's, well, he has two separate accounts.
I'm sorry?
His name's in here twice, which probably means he has two separate tombs up, so I'm just getting one, one of them in.
There he is, and he's there twice. Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Fuller, can you, we, we don't have to see you as long as we can hear you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Can you identify yourself for the record, please?
Yep, William Herbert Fuller Jr., flying for the liquor license for Oyster Fest.
Excellent. Can you explain the bartending service of New England Company for the audience? Yeah.
We are a 12-seat catering company. We solely deal with alcohol, and this is what we do, we do events in and around southeastern Mass, Boston-Daly, and we've done numerous events for Lorna Brunel and Esteban Scholz for the last five to 10 years, and we're gonna expand into Wareham.
Excellent. When you do these events, you also tend to spotlight and serve the local product from the local breweries, is that correct?
Correct, yeah. I actually talked to the owner of Lucky Goat, we're gonna have his bear on, on tap for the Oyster Fest.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Most likely buzzes bay and may flower as well for options.
Awesome. They have, in the packet, they've given us all the information that they need, so do you have any questions, Mr. Fuller?
I do not.
Any questions? Okay, we've already permitted the use of the roads for this in earlier, or other places in the agenda, we will be doing other authorizations. So I would accept a motion to approve an issue of one-day liquor licenses on the agenda.
I move to approve an issue of one-day liquor license permit, wine and malt beverages only, to the bartending service of New England LLC for Oyster Vent, Oyster Fest event on May 24, 2025.
Second.
Rain date?
Rain date, May 25, 2025.
I also second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve the two dates, if necessary. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Ms. Corb, aye. And myself, aye. It is so. Mr. Fuller, thank you very much, and I guess we can mail that to you?
Perfect, yeah, that'd be great. Awesome, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, have a great, can you just make sure it's mailed to PO Box 425, Middleborough, Mass? I think that's on the application.
PO Box what? 425?
PO Box 425.
Middleborough?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, have a great day, guys.
You as well, thank you. Okay, let's go back to licenses and permits. These under eight, they are renewals A and B. If you would do A and B, and then, yeah.
I'm sorry?
If you would move to approve both A and B as listed?
Okay. I move to approve items 8A and 8B as listed.
And they are one-day, or they are all alcohol licenses for Little Harbor Golf Course?
Right.
Yeah, okay. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve those licenses. Any further discussion on the motion? All of the paperwork is in order, the insurance, et cetera, the TIPS certificate, all of that. Any further discussion on the motion to grant?
I'm sorry, I should have said pending inspections.
That's, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll go for a roll call vote. Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms., myself, yes, it is so. Okay, we also have under C, a seasonal liquor license renewal certification for the year 2025. This is something that we sign from time to time, and so what we need from you is simply a, it's actually, I think we already signed it, I think it was in the packet, so I would accept a motion to sign the seasonal liquor license renewal certification.
I so move.
I second, and I have questions.
Okay, sure.
Go ahead, you go first.
My question is, there was some information in the packet about Cape Cod lobster rolls?
They chose not to renew their license.
Okay.
And that's why it is showing up on the agenda. And so when somebody chooses not to renew, we have to let the ABCC know that.
Okay.
Okay? But it was their choice.
Okay, so that answers my question. I was, because I'd never seen that form before.
Okay, yeah. Excellent. So move to authorize the signing of it. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
And myself, aye. It is so. Okay, and a discussion, a possible vote for a May 24th special event permit for an Oyster Festival to be run by Lorna Brunel. We've talked about this before. She has met with the police chief, the ambulance EMS department, and you just heard from the business that would be providing liquor at the location, and the location is at Bessie Park, and specific hours. It says 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM, but I really would rather have it, say, 12:00 to 7:00, because the vendors have to set up, if that's okay. So if, if you would make that motion?
Yes. I move to approve the application of Laura Brunel for a special event permit, Oyster Fest, to be held on May 24, 2025, rain date, May 25, 2025, from 12:00 to 7:00 PM at Bessie Park and Harborview Restaurant.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve, as read. Any further discussion on the motion? I will just say that we did authorize the closure of the road from Warren's Harborview to Bessie Park. It does not impact Toby Hospital, which is an easier thing for the police to, to take care of. So any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
And myself, aye. It is so. I will accept a motion to accept very generous donation.
So I move to accept a donation from the Friends of the Wareham Free Library to the Wareham Free Library in the sum of $7,500 for the purposes of purchasing books, materials, and technology.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept a very generous donation. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
And myself, aye. It is so. Next?
Next, I move that we accept a donation from Elizabeth Perry to the Wareham Police Department in the amount of $1,000.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept that generous donation. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
And myself, aye. It is so. Now, I'm going to ask that we go to the present, to the town administrator's report, because I know that he's not been feeling too good for a couple of days. And so if you don't mind, I would have him do the budget presentation, and then if he wants to leave the meeting, that's fine, if that's okay with you. Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you, I appreciate it. Let's see, I try and share the PowerPoint. I forwarded the regular budget presentation to you, or the regular budget to you a while ago.
Yes.
So just wanted to make sure everybody had that.
Yes.
All right. Let's get started, huh? Let's see. There we go. Everybody, can, can you see the slideshow?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, perfect. So we are going to start off, I'm getting the pie charts out of the way, so we know every, every budget presentation has a slide, has a pie chart, and I'm stealing that line from the upper Cape Cod Tech superintendent, so. So this is basically, we're gonna start off with our revenue, and if you look at it in this section, you'll see on the far right-hand side, that's our levy limit, and I'll show you what Proposition 2.5 means later. When you look at it, you'll take the 60%, plus the new growth, that 1%, 2.5% increase, which is 1%, and the debt, school debt exclusion, that's a middle school debt exclusion, that makes up about 64% of our revenue, is, is taxes, real estate taxes, and so the next thing that comes in is our state aid. About 20% of our revenue comes for state aid for schools, and 4% general government state aid. And it was approximately 25% last year, and it has decreased. We'll show you later that we actually received negative state aid this year. Local receipts, those are, we'll go over what those are, but they make up about 11% of ours, and then the Enterprise Fund, direct, indirect, those are everything we do on behalf of the Enterprise Fund, plus everything we pay in our budget for them, such as, such as benefits for their employees, pension, et cetera. Go to the next slide. So how you come up with, with your budgets, you start off, obviously, with, with revenue. And if you look, this number, if you go to second column, the FY '26 proposed budget, the real estate taxes, that $50 million comes from taking the prior year's real estate taxes, 48.9, the 2.5% authorized, which is the 1.2, then the new growth, which was 611,000 plus. You do not include the debt exclusion. Then that becomes your new levy base, which for this year's $50,768,296. That is what is increased by 2.5%. Not your individual tax bill or anything like that. That is your levy base. That's the only amount that's allowed to increase by 2.5% without an override. And you'll see at 2.5%, it actually only grows this year about $39,000. So new growth, and we'll show you the trends later on, estimating at $550,000. Debt exclusion, that is what it is, that's the cost of the elementary school, and that's just basically in and out. So if you look at it with our, our increase in taxes would be about 1.8 million. Now, we're gonna go to what we received for state aid from the schools, $166,500. That is from the governor's budget of an increase of $75 per pupil, which means 22, roughly 2,200 in our schools, that's how many students we have. So that is our new state aid for this year for our schools, is $166,500. Then our charter school reimbursement is actually going down, $246,585. So we're receiving negative $80,000, over $80,000 negative new, new revenue for state aid for the schools, so it's a little difficult to swallow. Unrestricted general government aid, that's going up 53,000, well over 53,000, I believe they're doing that roughly, or low under, under 2%, they're trying to get that up to 3%. We've had an increase in the veterans' benefits, that is, you see later, later on the budget, we actually pay that out, and we receive 75% back from the Commonwealth. And then there's the exemptions for the blind elderly. We've had an increase in the veterans' benefits. That is, you see later, later on in the budget, we actually pay that out, and we receive 75% back from the Commonwealth. And then there's the exemptions for the blind elderly spouses, state aid, the state-owned land, and and the subtotal is about $230,000 in new aid. So all told, it's just under $150,000 in new revenue from state aid. So going over the since FY19, we've been tracking our new growth, obviously beforehand, and to get to the 550,000, we're taking a five-year average, not including the one-time 890,000, that was an outlier. Those are a couple of big projects coming on board. I spoke to the director of assessing, and she feels confident in the $550,000 estimate. Net state aid, so this is the, these are the big ones. If you look at this historically, I brought this all the way back to 2013. So our net state aid for FY26, when you take the assessments, the increase in assessments from the Commonwealth, is actually negative 303,759. So we did have two, a large increase in FY24, but now we're at two consecutive years of declines. And after 13 years, our net state aid is only 654,097 higher. So that obviously has not kept up with the last round of inflation. Any questions on that so far?
I just had a quick question on the previous slide. Under new growth, yeah, that big 890 number, that was a couple of big projects coming on board. What were those big projects?
Those were the Woodland Cove, we're picking up the new growth on them, a bunch of the condos from Bay Point, Littleton Drive, and I believe there's a few solar in there as well. So usually you'll see a growth spike when a solar project comes on board.
So actually, Woodland Cove was something I needed an update on. I, the last I heard about Woodland Cove, it was tied up in a bunch of structural issues, but apparently at least some of that has come online?
Correct.
That's awesome. Okay, great, thank you.
So back to state aid, so we'll go to the, the next section. So local receipts. Local receipts are locally generated revenue other than real estate and personal property taxes. Some examples are motor vehicle excise, local meals, permit fees, and investment income. These are considered the most unpredictable revenue. So the Commonwealth Division of Local Services recommends that you never budget more than 90% of the prior fiscal year actual collections. Wareham's budget is set in the middle of the fiscal year, so what we, so we use no more than 90% of the last full fiscal year's actual collections as an estimate. So as an example, for F, for this budget, the FY26, we're using FY24's actual collections for the FY26 estimate. If local receipts come in higher, that generates excess revenue, which is certified as free cash, and we use that free cash for capital items in reserves. So one of the reasons you don't want to budget your free, your, excuse me, local receipts at 100% is what we experienced before. You results in negative free cash. In other words, if you have a dip in revenue in any of the sections, you can't make it up. So you, you actually have to appropriate those monies in the next year. It's pretty much a nightmare, so you're paying what you overestimated in the prior year, you're paying out in the, in the next year. So it, it means you're doing basic double cuts at sometimes, so. Not one you want to get involved with. So motor vehicle excise tax. That's been trending well. Actual collections between FY23 and FY24 increased about 3.45%. If you look at FY25, when you take FY23, the 90% of that's roughly 3,200,000 and a couple thousand dollars. So we're right in the same line. Same thing for FY24, actual collections for the FY26 estimate. One of the things we need to worry about is, so excise, motor vehicle excise, isn't about the sale of car, it's about the value of the, the vehicle. So the tariffs could reduce new car sales. As cars age, they devalue, yielding less excise tax revenue. So it's something we need to consider, that this could begin dipping as people hold on to their vehicles longer, and they depreciate in value. Although outside of that, it's been a positive trend line. Local meals excise, the collections have rebounded from the COVID-19 decline. And we saw an FY24 large increase of almost 9% in actual collections. So we're utilizing $690,000 versus the 767 of the actual FY24 collections. Local rooms occupancy, this is going to be a little strange. If you look at those years that it popped right up, those are the years that they started including the short-term rental tax in that section, separated it out later. So local rooms is hotel motel excise tax, and then when the so-called Airbnb tax came on, at first it was included in there, and that separated later. So if you, if you look at that, well, we're taking the FY24 collections, less the Airbnb tax, if you will, out of it. And then that's why we have this completely strange-looking graph here that, of, you know, the, the one year of the FY24, and then the estimates, but. Does that make sense? I'm not hearing enough, so good.
So that's the Airbnbs, the short term?
Correct, yeah. So our actual collections were 281,000 in FY24.
Maybe you don't know the answer to this question, but the Board of Health does have a registry for rental properties.
Correct.
Is, are they counted there by the, by the Board of Health or not? Are the Airbnbs?
It's, rentals are counted by the Board of Health, so, well, these are short-term rentals, but the Board of Health also does year-round rentals, the apartments, all sorts of stuff, so.
Okay, thanks.
Boat excise tax, this is just, this is really about when bills go out, so you'll see sort of this, this crest and ebb and flow of it. So it's, you know, we can, we can trend that using 45,000 is perfectly within line.
Did you really just say ebb and flow about a boat excise tax?
Yes, it's a terrible, excuse me, terrible, terrible pun there, but.
What?
Excuse me. Cannabis revenue, so this is the tale to tell. Cannabis, we had the fourth retailer within the Commonwealth. If you remember, we said that that would be our highest amount, because after that, the market would be more saturated. We had people coming from all over the Commonwealth to, to purchase their marijuana in, in Wareham. Much, much to some people's chagrin, but the, the budget appreciated it. So if you look, they have started to level off, and one of the other things is the Cannabis Control Commission doing away with the, the impact fees for the non-retails really hurt our revenue. It's a couple of the unfunded mandates that have come down from the Commonwealth in the, in the recent years that have really hurt the local communities. But, you know, it's just another tale to, to tell on it. So if you see our collections FY24, which, seeing what we've received in FY25 so far, it looks like that's using the 225 as a safe number. Historically, we've not budgeted over 150,000, just as we were watching the trend go down, but I think 225 makes a, makes a nice floor.
I had a quick question. The last bullet point, you say, we believe we are reaching a floor. What makes you believe that?
From the FY25 collections. They're running around the same as FY24.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So these, so examples, some of these are liquor license permits, like the select board work with, building permits, health permits. Excuse me, we're in the, the fee section. Fees, these are, example of fees are trailer coach. Trailer coach are what the mobile homes pay. They don't pay real estate, the underlying ground does, but they do not. There's a motor coach fee. District assessments, municipal lien certificates, the town clerk fees, planning, and these can be extremely volatile. You can see that we've had some, some, you know, highs of 845,000 in 19, dropping precipitously, almost 200,000 in FY20. You know, that was obviously a COVID situation. But then there was, you can see another drop from 22 to 23. So looking at what we had for nine, the, the FY24 collections spiked back up. I am feeling safe using the 775,000. We also know that the cannabis host fees will no longer be, be in here. So this is a, this is a decent conservative number to utilize. Rentals are the Old Town Hall, which WCTV is in, Memorial Town Hall, that is, we have called Omni Point, it's a T-Mobile lease using the cupola and the attic area for cell towers. And that's something that you'll see in the special town meeting. We need to put that out to bid again. Been about a 20-year lease that's coming to an end. And this is a predictable income. There, we used to receive more for the Oak Grove School. And now I'm happy to say that is, it is the Oak Grove Cape Verdean Cultural Center. And the Oak Grove Cape Verdean Cultural folks have been utilizing that, so I think that's a great thing for the community. Licenses and permits, again, you can see these fluctuate pretty well, but we are continuing to see build-outs. And these, like I said before, liquor licenses, et cetera, they are impacted by large projects and the economic environment. So something we will need to look into for and monitor for FY27 budgeting. Fines and forfeits are some of the assessors' fines, parking fines, and after post-COVID-19 revenue, that coast, excuse me, we saw a spike, we've seen a little decline in the revenue. So there are 65,000. Investment income tells the tale, right? If you look back in FY21, FY22, that's back when you were getting less than a, you know, you're getting a fraction of percentage from your bank. So we have our certain rules that we can put our, our regular accounts in. In other words, we can't put our regular accounts in equities and such. So you're, when, when interest rates spiked and we started getting a good return, that's what you saw in FY23, the 1.3 million. We had, you know, with the, the interest rate cuts, we have seen a decline. So basically on 950,000, and, you know, it's anyone's guess as to what's going to happen, but I think that's, that's a safe margin to use. I just don't believe this is something we'll have forever, so it bears watching. Medicaid, those are, that's reimbursement for for Medicaid-eligible student services that are provided to the, the students through the schools. This is obviously one of certain that could fully disappear. It's hard to predict, test service levels and eligibility fluctuate. And again, the federal cuts could impact this, so it's something that, that you may not have in FY27. Misland is recurring, these are just really, you know, it's been trending lower. These are some small subcategories. Return checks, some other items that just, you know, certain fees that municipalities receive over the years. So about 215,000, it's really, that's right in line with where we've been. And again, this one, there is a strange ebb and flow to this one as well. So when you look at it, what we budgeted for FY25 versus what we're proposing for FY26, it's about a $935,000 increase. We're able to do this this year when we're missing out on the state aid because of our conservative budgeting. So in other words, if we did not have this, we'd be looking at not being able to fund the, the departments and the schools anywhere near this. So this is a, this is a good, it's a good year to be able to do this. And again, we need to start looking out for FY27, but this is how we've been able to support our departments. So the next section is available funds. This is a small thing. Hardware service permit fees, community preservation fund, these are all, and are actually funding debt service for them specifically. Community preservation fund is the, that debt service is for Little Harbor Country Club. And then harbor service permit fees, that debt service is for the, the new boat for the Harbor Master. And then you'll see some swallow on waterway improvements and wetlands protection. So all told, you're looking at just a little bit less money, 108,000, the reason being that debt service has gone down. And then enterprise fund indirect, direct, again, we've gone over that. We have the breakdown of that on, with the WPCF budget. We still don't charge for everything, we subsidize that, so this is not the full amount that you could charge. So all told, when you look at it for the new revenue, you're looking at about $2,894,438. So now we'll get over to the, this is just the, the summary of the budget. Again, when you look at all the revenue, then we're going to go through these later, but if you look at the right-hand side, these are the rec, called the recap sheet items. So the big ones are state tuition assessments, that's charter school, school choice sending, about 4.7 million. Retired teachers' health insurance, we'll show that later. That went up pretty significantly this year. That went up about $400,000. But that's, I believe that's because of the GIC increase costs, so. We also, the overlay went up, and if you remember, we voted in the additional exemptions and benefits for some of our, our seniors and folks that really need it, so we increased the overlay. So I'm going to go down instead of going through in this section, I'll get on the rest of it as we go through the slides. So this is the one, the section, where's our money go? And then we overlay this with a dollar bill, and really gives a good example of, of what you're looking at. So obviously, the largest portion, I don't think anybody's shocked by it, for municipality is education. So you see the big portion there, the school department, and then school employee, town employee benefits, public safety. Then the state and county assessments, that's what we're actually being charged back from the state after the aid they give us. Upper Cape Cod Tech, Public Works Department, you said it's municipal maintenance, street lights, snow and ice. General Government, that is, general government is select board administration, town meeting, treasure collector, assessor, accounting, planning, town clerk. It's, it is basically all the non-public safety departments and not the, so that's, there, there's a lot that covers that in that small section. New school debt, debt service, health and human services, and culture and recreation. So these are the cost drivers by function. Education, we're, the, it's going up about 4.21%, so about 1,458,000. The benefits are going up a little over a million. Public safety is going up a little over 400,000. Intergovernmental, so again, those are the, what we get charged back from the Commonwealth, going up almost 480,000. General Government, real small increase, 74,000. Upper Cape Cod Tech, reduction this year because of enrollment, and that's really enrollment-dependent. Public Works and Facilities, that's going up 247,000. We've actually been able to fill the open positions that we've been budgeting for, so that is great. Looking forward to seeing, you know, being able to retain some of these folks. Debt service, late reduction, human resources, and cultural and recreation, not going up too much, so. Medical insurance. The town is part of the Mayflower Municipal Health Group. We are going up 6.75%, which is, which is pretty great. The Maya, the communities are going Um, the Maya, the communities are going up a little over fourteen point percent. So, um, it's been really good that we see, we went in and joined the Mayflower Municipal Health Group. And, uh, the five-year rate increase average for them has been three point one five percent. And, you know, we're lucky with how they've been, uh, putting things together that we're only seeing a six point seven five percent increase. So, it's, it's kudos to some good management over there. Uh, pension, this is our Plymouth County pension. Uh, about, uh, that is for town employees and then all non-school, um, non-teacher employees for the school department. So, about fifty-six percent of the, the people covered under this are for the school and the, the rest are town. Uh, so we should expect eight percent, uh, annual increases until it's fully funded, our pension liability by June twenty thirty-one. Uh, this has been pushed out to twenty thirty-one and you have, by law, it has to be fully funded by twenty thirty-four. And again, we're part of Plymouth County for this. Uh, medical insurance, obviously, and pension are big, or some of our biggest drivers. Workers' compensation, one eleven F, one eleven F is the injured on duty policy for police. Workers' comp is for the compensation for the, uh, you know, any of our other employees that are injured while on town time. Um, it's been really, we, you can see we've been doing so much better. Low severity, number of claims has helped create a low experience modification. And, uh, we feel continued training has helped reduce the, the claims. So, this has been one of the positives. Town insurance, general and professional liability. So, these are all your buildings, right? Our biggest claim has been the library from when the, um, uh, all that water was pushed through that caused the, the sprinklers and things to pop and then, um, the mold issue there. Uh, and then these are, uh, then the other thing is for, uh, boards and committees. So, the insurance covering like the, uh, you, the select board, school committee, planning board. And this is where you get spikes from lawsuits, things like that. And, uh, we've also seen that we've had, uh, from the, uh, the buildings. The insurance company did revalue the building starting in, uh, FY twenty-four. So, we saw a pretty good jump there. But, uh, this year's good news, just a one percent increase for FY twenty-six. Upper Cape Cod tech, again, heavily, uh, dependent on enrollment. And, uh, they, you know, it's a, uh, uh, the, sorry, that slide should have been changed. But, uh, key insight's not, uh, accurate on there, but it's the, uh, so it's not so key, I guess. Um, upper Cape Cod tax slight, slight decline. And again, it's about the same as it was in FY twenty, but it could spike as enrollment changes. State and county assessments. They continue to rise. The largest increase was retired, as we said, retired teachers' health insurance, four hundred twenty-nine thousand. Um, and this was, but there's good news, it was the first year, no increase for charter or school choice sending tuition. So, um, you know, I think back in twenty twelve when I started, our entire, um, school, our, no, our entire state assessment was two million forty-five thousand. So, you know, it significantly jumped over that time. And I apologize for this one. It is a, it is a assault on your eyes. Um, but, uh, you know, this is what, uh, is just giving you an idea of what we're looking at. And you can see if, uh, retired teachers' health had stayed pretty stable over the years until we saw a big jump in twenty-five than twenty-six. But if you go to the bottom, um, is really the school choice sending and charter school tuition that used to be two point six million in twenty nineteen, it's up to four point seven in twenty twenty-six. That's been, uh, really a driver of our, uh, state, state assessments. So, this is a, this is actually a neat thing that pulled off of, uh, the, the Division of Local Services website. And if you look down here, it's just a little snapshot of us, right? Wareham, our average single-family tax bills, three thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars. And gives you some more information, average single-family assessed value, um, you know, income per capita, what our tax rate is, number of single-family parcels. So, uh, what it allowed you to do too is if you look, if you take that thirty-nine hundred, where that puts us in that three thousand to, to forty-five hundred, just under forty-five hundred range. And, uh, so now I put all the communities in, uh, when I put, yeah, in the Commonwealth that have this, that same range or less of the average single-family tax bill. And it came up with this. So, those are all the communities in the Commonwealth that have an average single-family tax bill within that range. So, some of them higher than us, up to the forty, almost forty-five hundred, and then the others less. So, conversely, you look at it, those are all the ones that have the higher average single-family tax bill than us in the Commonwealth. So, you know, and it also tells you the average, state average, single-family tax bills, seventy-seven hundred. Um, so, you know, and I think they're, they're missing a few communities. But, uh, I think, uh, missing four out of the three hundred fifty-one. So, um, then what I did too is just the typical, uh, just going through. Started looking at it, because I'm always asked to add the, uh, add the fire districts, right? So, our, if you look in the upper left-hand corner, that's our average single-family tax bill for Wareham. Then when you add the onset, the Wareham Fire District Tax, we're at four thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars. When you do the Wareham, uh, with, uh, onset fire, four thousand nine hundred and fifty. Then I took the average single-family tax bill from the other communities in the area. Felameth, Born, Lakeville, Rochester, Middleborough, Carver, Plymouth, Mattapoiset. All right, so, you know, we're, we're obviously lower, but what, what does that mean? And, uh, actually, this is the, this is last year's, uh, average, um, what do you call it? Uh, single-family parcels, so there, it actually would be a bigger delta, but it's okay. Um, then instead of the nine four eight nine, it's a nine five oh one, I think, oops. So, um, if you look at it, so you take Born, right? Born at the five thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine. Us with the onset fire, so I'll take the onset fire because it's a higher amount. That means nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars. The average person pays more in, uh, in Born. So, what does that mean across all those single-family parcels? Well, if you take that nine thirty-nine and multiply that by nine thousand four hundred and eighty-nine parcels, it's about eight point nine million dollars. Let's do that for Carver if it were the, uh, if it were the same. You'll get twenty-one million if we had their same average single-family tax bill. Felameth, seven point two million more. Lakeville, nine point two. Mattapoiset, twenty-nine million more. Middleborough, seventeen million more. Carver, twenty-three million more. And then Plymouth, fifteen million more. And I cut off, uh, Mattapoiset there, so I apologize. But obviously, that would have been even more significant.
So, so that really demonstrates, if you have a low tax rate and low, um, collections, whether you add the, the district in, when you add the districts in, the difference is in the amount of money that we are able to spend on providing services. I think that's something that needs to be said kind of out loud.
Yeah, um, you know, our, our goal is to provide the best service possible. And I think we just need everybody to understand we're doing it with what we have, so. Uh, so that would be the, let me stop sharing. And, uh, you know, we have, we did the all-day budget hearings with the finance committee. They went through the departments and I'd urge you to wa, watch those, go through it if you, if you haven't been able to already. And, uh, you know, if there's, there's any questions. But that's, uh, that's sort of our budget and the, um, how we come up with it and the drivers in a nutshell, that helps.
Thank you. Questions?
I, I would just make a statement that I think this is a really good demonstration of what is, what it is we're doing with what we have and why it is we have what we have and not more. And, uh, it will be interesting, um, to plot the, the path forward and to see how we, how we deal with, you know, ever-increasing challenges as a town.
Yeah, I agree. Uh, this was a really good presentation. I am not a numbers person, as anyone who was at CVS today will attest. When I was trying to give someone too much money for the thing I bought, um, but I, I was able to follow along and I've had some experience having been a courier reporter for a few years. But I really liked this presentation. It was really easy to understand what you were trying to communicate, so thank you for that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I, I love the presentation. I love the dollar bill with the overlay. And I think it's really important to echo what Ms. Quirk said. We are doing the best that we can with what we have. And if we had not entered, uh, Proposition Two and a Half with the lowest tax rate around, then, and we've tried and override, override once, um, that might bring more money into the coffers. I'm not suggesting that we do that in any manner, shape, or form. But, but the difference in what other towns around us are able to generate in terms of, um, revenue is just, it's incredible, really incredible. And thank you very much for that. Mr. Sullivan, do you want to touch briefly on any of the warrant articles on the regular town meeting warrant, which would be the revolving funds? Um, the capital plan, the budget you just did, the EMS services budget? Or do you want to do that on a different day?
The, um, revolving funds are, are typical ones. The only thing you'll see was a slight increase on the, uh, rental inspection program. So, we were, uh, we've actually been, the, uh, we needed to raise the ceiling on that for what we were doing because the, the excess revenue was going into the, uh, general fund beyond that, except their costs were more than, than that. So, we knew by raising that, it means it's still covering its costs. So, does, does that make sense?
Yes. The capital plan, do you want to do?
Yeah, so capital plan would just be for the, um, we'll really only be doing that in the special town meeting. Uh, there's, there's really no other capital within the, uh, the annual budget. You know, uh, water pollution control budget, that should have been, uh, I don't know if you've received copies of that, I think you should have, and the EMS, those are the, there's nothing really new on, uh, either of those. It's the, it's the same setups as, as normal. And, uh, they did go through the, uh, finance committee on their all-day hearing as well.
Excellent, go ahead.
Yeah, I've been curious. I was obviously at the town meeting where we passed the thirty-six million dollars. And I've been wondering, just as a private citizen, where does that stand? So, is that something that is going to be updated at town meeting by the sewer commission? Or something along those lines of where is our money? What's gone, where is our thirty-six million dollars gone? Is that going to be made clear at town meeting?
There's no article for that at town meeting, so, uh, I think, they, they've been speaking about it during their meetings and giving updates. Uh, but I'm sure, I'm sure, um, Scott can give something in general. Uh, with their going through the first phase, uh, we went over with everybody and let everybody know the, um, cat, the reimbursement we got from the Commonwealth that reduced the overall cost of it. That was something we announced, uh, to the, to select board a few months ago. Um, so, but no, that's not what you, you would typically do as part of the, uh, budget.
Yep, okay, I got that, so.
It's more of like getting outside.
Okay. So, Madam Chair, is it doable to have Scott come before us and give us a quick update on where that project stands? Just what's been built, what is yet to be built?
We can ask.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, and then, uh, the, the union contracts, you're not, or that's on the annual. Um, and we put, I think it was six or eight of them on there. But are you ready to move forward with any of those or are we probably going to be?
We have to do executive session, Madam Chair, before you, you vote on those.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any other questions of Mr. Sullivan before I let him go home, stay home?
I have one. And Derek, Mr. Sullivan, please tell me if this is too general a question to give a meaningful answer to. And I'm happy to accept that as an answer. With, um, potential decreases in environmental regulation uh, emanating from the federal level, is there a possibility that due to decreased environmental compliance costs, that the, the town's costs for environmental compliance may go down? Again, if it's too general, just let me know. If you haven't had a chance to think about it, let me know. And I don't in any way want to, uh, indicate my opinion on whether this is a good thing or a bad thing. But just a realistic question about what, where there may be a source of savings.
Yeah, I, I don't think we'll, um, we have, we have some local, meaning Commonwealth regulations, um, that would, I think will still be upheld too. So, for example, we'll still, we have our thirty-three hundred catch basins and we're still going to follow the guidelines of, they're supposed to clean those every two years. We actually clean them every year. Um, so tho, those are some of the big ones. Uh, you know, it's, I don't see anything, I, I'm not knowledgeable enough on, on anything that would, uh, make a difference right now. But I don't see us as going backwards nor the, I would think the Commonwealth most likely be stepping in on, on some of those areas, make sure. So, for example, we did just receive notification, um, from the Division of Marine Fisheries asking for us not to, uh, grade Swift's Beach or, um, with the, uh, not, not grade it, but you know, use the, um, the sweeper on the beach during the month of, uh, May through, through June due to horseshoe crabs. Um, so we'll still see things like that coming down the pike.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm, unless, yeah. And, and Mr. Sullivan, I'm going to, um, excuse you. I, I know that this, I can tell by looking at you, you don't really feel very well. So, I appreciate you being here this evening and, um, thank you for an excellent presentation. And if anybody wants further information, they should look at the finance committee meeting that was held with you. Um, not the all-day meeting, but the, the time that you went before the finance committee to, to present the budget. Because there were some questions that were asked there and I think it would be important for the public to know that. So, good night, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, so what I would like to do would be, we have the grid, did you get a grid?
I did.
Okay, did you get a grid?
I got one, but I couldn't print it out.
Okay, so let's share. Okay, so, um, I think we can make recommendations to the town meeting on some of these articles. So, I would accept a motion on Article Four to recommend favorable action to the town meeting.
I move, uh, that we recommend favorable action to town meeting on Article Four, FY twenty-six revolving funds.
Second. Motion made in second to recommend favorable action. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote, Ms. Corbett.
Aye.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, go ahead. Um, occasional reports, that's simply, it's a standard article, we recommend. Oh, we already did.
Right, we did that, yeah.
Um, the capital plan, um, it's been moved to the special. So, I would say recommend favorable action just in case something comes up in the meantime.
Okay, um, I move to recommend favorable action on FY twenty twenty-six capital plan.
Second. Motion made in second to approve, I mean, to recommend favorable action. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, Ms. Corbett. Corbett?
Aye.
It was Quirk and Corbett together.
Aye.
Thank you, and myself, aye. So, uh, the budget presentation that we just heard.
I move to, um, recommend favorable action on the FY twenty twenty-six budget.
Second. Motion made in second to recommend favorable action. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
And myself, aye, it is so. Um, the EMS services budget was part of what was given to the finance committee. It's, you know, I would recommend. It's, you know, I would recommend that we recommend favorable action.
Okay. I recommend that we recommend, I'm sorry. I move that we recommend favorable action on the emergency medical services budget.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to recommend favorable action. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So, the EMS, again, a presentation was made to the finance committee as well as an all-day presentation, emergency medical-
Right, I thought we just did that one.
Yeah, Upper Cape.
Right, we're doing this one now.
Yes. And Upper Cape, we were given a presentation in our packet, and there was an excellent presentation in front of the finance committee. So, I would accept a motion on that one.
I, I move that we recommend favorable action on Upper Cape Cod Regional Technical High School budget.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to recommend favorable action to the town meeting, town meeting. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
And myself, yes, it is so. The enterprise fund, we will have, we will rec, I would recommend recommending favorable action. And then, we can have Mr. Crahansel come in after, afterwards, if that's okay.
Sure. I move that we recommend favorable action on the WPCF enterprise fund.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to recommend favorable action. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So, we'll skip over that one. And the 16, the citizens petition, I have, I believe it is a resolution only. But I would accept some kind of motion, that we forward it to the town meeting for their, that we, you know, I don't know how we're going to do that.
I know, because I, I'm just going to think out loud here.
Yep.
When that young lady was here, it was a very interesting presentation. I read the article in Wareham Week afterwards, and it was much, much clearer what she was asking. And I was very favorably disposed towards voting in favor of this article. And then, we got a recommendation from someone who seems to be also extremely knowledgeable. And now, I would like to see this article debated on the floor of town meeting.
So, we would recommend favorable action, which would enable the public to speak.
Yes.
Okay. I move that we recommend favorable action on the citizens position, petition, excuse me, on rodenticide.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Bowen, I'm going to ask you to weigh in, if you can put freckles aside for the moment. I, my preference would be to recommend that we send it to the town meeting for its action. But I'm not convinced that it's anything other than a resolution. But we have a motion on the floor for favorable action. You understand my discomfort?
I, I do, Madam Chairman. And Freckles is napping right next to me, so he's enjoying the meeting.
Freckles has his gorgeous dog, by the way.
So, the article is on the warrant. And so, town meeting will get to debate the merits of it, regardless of the board's recommendation. So, I don't think you need to restrain your opinion based on a fear that your recommendation may or may not prevent the public from being able to act on it. So, that's the first thing I wanted to say. The second thing is that there's a pretty fair chance that the subject matter that is being ostensibly regulated is already regulated by state law. And there's a pretty fair chance that the Attorney General is going to find that, to the extent that there is any actionable item that emerges from this vote, that is preempted by state law. And then, finally, it probably is a resolution insofar as it doesn't really create a new bylaw. It, it doesn't really create anything for the town to act on. It's, it's more an expression of opinion about how you feel about rodenticide. So, I think even if town meeting does vote in favor of it, it's not going to be legally binding. It doesn't require the town or the townspeople to take any particular action. It's just an expression of how people feel about the subject matter. So, that makes it a resolution.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the motion is for recommending favorable action. It's been seconded. Is there any further discussion on that motion?
I, I don't quite know what to do. Because I, I mean, I hate for us to recommend favorable action when our point really is to get it on the floor of town meeting. But if that's the way to do it, I guess that's okay.
I, through you, Madam Chair, I don't, why would you have a problem with us getting it on the floor of town meeting so that it can be debated by town meeting?
I think-
I don't get that.
Okay, my concern is that if we recommend favorable action, that means that we think that this should go forward. And because it's a resolution, I'm not willing to recommend favorable action on something that might be overturned by the AG or in fact, might not even be anything other than a resolution. So, I'm, that's why I asked the question. Mr. Bowen, can you?
Sure, Madam Chairman. You can also, you can also vote no recommendation, which, there's nothing wrong with that. I mean, this is a, an opinion piece. The town is not going to be, if it passes, the town is not going to be bound to take any particular action one way or the other. If it fails, whatever protections are in place by the state are still going to be there. So, if, if you just want it to be discussed at town meeting, well, it will be discussed at town meeting regardless of your recommendation. But if you don't want to make a recommendation, you're just sort of interested in hearing what people want to say about it, you can just simply move to make no recommendation and act in that fashion.
Thank you.
Sort of. So, what's the, with the motion on the floor, with the motion on the floor, what do we?
We'd have to withdraw.
You'd have to withdraw your motion, if, if you would want to do that. And then, you would have to withdraw your second.
And so, here's, through you. Here's my concern. If it's not, if we're recommending approval of something that is not lawful, that, it concerns me, that is inconsistent with the law. And if that is what we're doing, I would prefer to have no recommendation rather than a recommendation.
Okay, so, to backtrack in my own brain, I didn't believe when I made the motion that I was urging approval of something that's not lawful. If that is what I was, am doing, then I withdraw my motion.
Your second.
My second.
And Mr. Bowen, is it in fact not, not a lawful position?
We don't know that yet.
Yeah, but I can, I can offer an opinion. If I were a betting man, I would say it's likely that the Attorney General would at worst decide that the subject matter has been preempted by state law, which means that the town does not have the authority to regulate that subject matter. I guess we can put that in the quote-unquote unlawful pile, although, you know, there's just all kinds of unlawful behaviors, some of which is, you know, egregious, and some of which is just, you know, oh, well. This might be more in the oh, well category. So, yeah, I mean, I guess that's really about it. It's, it, at the end of the day, it's, it's going to be found to be a resolution.
Okay. And one of the things I was struck by was the passion of the presenter and desire that people, with her level of passion and willingness to commit to advocacy within the town, get the message from us that it's extremely welcome, and we want to support her efforts.
So, are you withdrawing your motion for favorable action?
Yes, and I am-
Thank you.
Substituting it with the motion to take no position, rather than vote against.
Is that, okay, to take no, okay. Is there any further discussion on that motion to take no action? Or take no recommendation? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you very much. Okay, so, I think we've disposed of that. Okay, we now have a warrant to close. And you, each of you have been given a draft warrant. And the reason, for the special, the reason it is a draft is if you look at page 19, for instance, there's a lot of work that the Bylaw Review Committee did. And we struggled mightily with them about presentation issues. So, ultimately, it came up with charts. And the office staff has been working to, I will call it box, part of the presentation. There will be no changes at all if we approve, if we move to put all of these articles on this warrant. It would only be a presentation issue. Okay?
And the question, so, what you're saying is that the content-
Content will not change.
Content won't change. The formatting will, but we have seen the content and-
Yes.
Are aware of everything that-
Yes.
Is going into the warrant.
Yes. So, instead of looking like this box page, it will look like, well, she got through most of it, but it would look more like, ooh, that's a box. It would look more like this, which I find to be a little-
What page are you looking at now?
I'm looking at 19, which is a, okay.
So, that has a box on it.
Yep. And then, if you look at page 32, it doesn't have a box, but it will have a box.
So, the box is good.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
So, you see the difference in presentation?
Yes, I completely see it, yes.
It's easier, we all believed, for the public to understand the massive amount of work that was done without, you know, wanting to say, I don't understand it. So, what I would ask the clerk to do would be to read the title of each one of these and to recommend that they be placed on the special town meeting warrant. And I don't know if we have a-
I'm not sure if I have a copy of this.
I don't think we have a, we don't have a grid. So, you'll just have to go for it. Read it in a minute. You have the, you have the, right there.
Where, right here?
Yep. So, she-
This is the-
You have another one? I'm sorry.
These are all the letters on-
Okay, here.
Okay, thank you.
So, for clarification?
Yep.
The clerk must go through-
She just needs to read the names.
Of each of the however many articles there are.
I think there's 19, correct.
19, okay.
Okay.
All right, so, your motion would be, I move that we include Article S1 in the title.
All right. I move that in the special town meeting warrant, we include Article S1 Budget Transfers.
And keep going.
Article S2 Fund Parking Program. Article S3 Spring 2025 Capital. Article S4 Transfer of Available Funds. Article S5 Prior Year Bills. Article S6 Peg Access Receipts to Wareham Community TV. Article 7, excuse me, Article S7 Harbor Services Permit Receipts Reserved for Appropriations Account. Article S8 Building Lease. Article S9 Council on Aging Membership. Article S10 Hammond School Assessment. Article S11 Riverwalk Acquisition. Article S12 Swift Beach Recreational Access and Rehabilitation. Article S13 Return Unused Funds from Completed Projects. Article S14 Amend the Zoning Bylaws in-
S15 is on page five?
Yes. In Section 1552 Site Plan Review.
No, it's out, this one.
I'm sorry.
On the bottom of page five. So, it'd be Article S15, it'd be ADU.
Okay.
Yeah.
Article S16?
15.
15.
Excuse me. Accessory Dwelling Units. Did I miss Article S14?
Nope. You amended the zoning bylaws, okay. And then, Article 16, is this one?
Okay, Article 16?
Page nine, eight.
Solar photovoltaic installations, Article 16. I think that should be S16.
Yes, and Article S17 is on page 13.
Article S17 Non-Substantive Revisions to Bylaws. Article S18 Adoption of Gender-Neutral Language Bylaw. Article S19 Additions/Beylaw Amendment.
And I believe that-
On 15 is S, oh, yeah, okay, nevermind.
Okay, Article S20 Deletions/Beylaw Amendment.
And I believe that's it. Yes, it is. Is there a second to the motion to include Articles S1 through S20 as read into the record?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to populate the warrant with those articles. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
And myself, aye. It is so. Ms. Quirk, may I have a motion, please, to close the special town meeting warrant?
I move to close the special town meeting warrant.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to close the special town meeting warrant. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
And myself, aye. It is so, thank you. We did the town administrators' report, liaison initiative reports. Ms. Corbett? I apologize for not having-
Not at this time.
Thank you. Liaisons, et cetera, initiatives, reports, none.
None from me.
Okay. The only one I will have is, again, if you haven't seen Loke's Playground's progress, it is absolutely amazing for all of the people who were concerned about the size of the equipment. If you drive by, you'll see that it's, it's tall, it's big, it's beautiful, and it's blue. And we will be having an open, opening day for, official on June 14th, which is also the opening day for the Wareham Gaitman, by the way. I will accept a motion on the minutes of March 18th.
I move that we approve the minutes of March 18th, 2025.
With that one scribbler's error.
With one scribbler's error, which is to change the word declare to elect in the designation of Sarah Corbett as Clerk pro temp.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve as corrected. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Corbett?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
And myself, aye. It is so, thank you. I just want to say thank you very much to the office staff. The last draft of this edition was at 5:15 this evening. Actually, it was at 5:30 this evening, which is when I got these copies. It's a massive undertaking, and I want to say thank you to, particularly to the Bylaw Review Committee individuals who, I, I think I probably would have been even nuttier than I am right now if I had gone through. But it's a very, it's a great presentation, a clear presentation that will be before the town meeting. So, I'm waiting for a motion.
I would have a question about adjournment. On one of the committees that I am a liaison for or a member of, one of the members insisted that we do need to move to adjourn, and we need a second, but we do not need to vote on adjournment. And I believe that is wrong. I do believe we need to vote on the adjournment. Is that accurate, Madam Chair?
I, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. And it needs to be seconded, but in the minutes, the only person's name who needs to be noted in the minutes would be the person who makes the motion. And the second can be just the word seconded, and that is appropriate.
Correct.
So, I'm waiting for a motion.
I move to adjourn.
Is there a second to that?
I second.
It's a motion to adjourn, and it's not debatable. And there is freckles. I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
And myself, aye. It is, we are adjourned, and it is 8:31. Thank you, and good night, Wareham.
Aloha, Wareham.
Wareham. Thank you very much.